We'll begin with the public hearing with ordinance. Begin with the public hearing for ordinance O dash twenty-three dash twenty-two in accordance to Town Council of Chesapeake Beach regarding the use of cannabis smoking or ingesting on town property and any business establishment in town. Is there anybody in the audience who has any comment on this ordinance? Hearing none is our motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. We have about three minutes before we start the regular meeting. We'll go back and watch the Phillies, but probably be just running back. It's right. The game zero, zero in the seventh. All right, seven. Okay. Get this rolling. Maybe we'll get to see the eleventh inning, Charlie. Okay, no. Oh, nice. Thank you. Good way to start the meeting. Okay, let's, let's begin the meeting. The folks, we're going to begin the October nineteenth Town Council meeting. At the record read that the entire council is present. At this time, we have the honor to say the pledge of allegiance. Hey, at this time, before we approve the agenda, I'm going to ask for a, a moment of silence. Life, life is really short and you, and you, and you realize it when we use our, when we lose our young ones. And we lost two beach babies this week. Austin McCollum, age twenty-four. You may know the family. They had that wonderful house right down here. That's always decorated for every particular holiday in the world. They, they're here accepting awards. I'm quite sure Austin was here with his family during Christmases, accepting the award. In fact, I would imagine he was here as a toddler twenty years ago. He lost his life, you know, tragically in a auto accident over, over the weekend. Jeffrey Gibson, age thirty-three. Another beach baby. I particularly, you know, I, I do Jeffrey well as my son, Patrick practically grew up in his house. And Jeffrey fought cancer for most of his life. He grew up, went to college, became a school teacher. Let's become an, an IT guy. He, but he was involved in politics. In fact, he served as the secretary for the Saint Mary's Democratic Central Committee. His parents, Dawn and Big Jeff, live here in town. And it's just, it's just tragic when you've known toddlers and they're not here anymore. So if you will. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. At this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, is there approval of the minutes of the September twenty-first public hearing?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the September twenty-first Town Council meeting?
No moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the September twenty-first closed session?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the October third informational work session?
To approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approval of the minutes of the October third informational work session?
To approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. And lastly, approval of the minutes of the October third, twenty twenty-three closed session?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay, the Town Administrators report, is there anything that stands out that you'd like to mention before I go to Dr. Bodine for, for questions?
Yes, thank you. I just want to mention, Councilwoman Hartman pointed out to me, she's been following this striping effort with State Highway very closely. And I just wanted to clarify that not all of the striping has been completed and not all of the crosswalks have been completed. I did speak with the project team with State Highway. They are working on getting the contractor back to finish all of that. And so I will get updates out as we are made aware, but they are, they are working on it.
State Highway is same problem with their contractors as homeowners do.
Since we're here, I'll, I'm going to flip. I'll do Dr. Bodine later since we have heard talking. Do you, would you like to lead off? Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you. Holly, did you want to say anything about your report before, or shall I just jump in my questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay. I just want to say wonderful about the Callens Field Storm Drain, the required approvals being met. That's fantastic. It's really wonderful applause. That's terrific. And also then the safe routes to school. Could you just remind me, what are the next steps after the RFP? Do we send it out to vendors or?
Yes, so right now there was some further cost estimating that was required. Wayne has completed that. That will finish what is necessary for the RFP with the state. And then yes, that will be released for a public solicitation through eMaryland Marketplace, posted on our website as well.
Great. And good luck negotiating for the fireworks. We love them. Does that get to be a multi-year contract?
It will be a multi-year contract. We typically do three years, a three-year contract.
Great. And congratulations on retaining the Sustainable Maryland certification. That's wonderful and hopefully brings in more money because, you know, love these things. But I'm really glad that our town is devoting the time and energy to being a sustainable entity. Our next question is on the water treatment plant. On page five, the, the water treatment usage since the completion of E and R has been consistently high. That paragraph, I was just wondering, do you have next steps or ideas yet? I thought, you know, maybe we were looking at the old plans, trying to find those pipes that might be leaking somewhere that we hope are shut down, but maybe aren't quite.
Yes, Josh has been working on that pretty extensively. Did you want to provide an update, Josh?
Well, that doesn't work. You should get a witching wand, you know? Hopefully we'll be able to track it. Well, that doesn't work. You should get a witching wand, you know? Yeah. Well, good luck. Then on page six, it's also with the water treatment plant. I'm requiring the power usage. That second paragraph there. Is this a general review or is there a reason to think there's a problem? Mariposa. My next question is on the water treatment plant. On page five, the, the water treatment usage since the completion of E and R has been consistently high. That paragraph, I was just wondering, do you have next steps or ideas yet? I thought, you know, maybe we were looking at the old plans, trying to find those pipes that might be leaking somewhere that we hope are shut down, but maybe aren't quite.
Yes, Josh has been working on that pretty extensively. Did you want to provide an update, Josh?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Obviously, a branch is legal that section.
Right. Well, that doesn't work. You should get a witching wand, you know? Yeah. Well, good luck. Then on page six, it's also with the water treatment plant. I'm requiring the power usage. That second paragraph there. Is this a general review or is there a reason to think there's a problem? Mariposa.
Because you could just place your light fixture.
Did you ever think you'd hope to be inefficient so you could fix something? Did you ever think you'd hope to be inefficient so you could fix something? Now. Okay, great. Okay, great. And welcome to Greg, your new employee. Well, that's all my questions for you. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. On page two, energy audit, I see that we were expecting a report October sixteenth. Has that arrived?
Yes, it has not, unfortunately. However, the Sustainable Maryland group said they would get it to me this week. So I'll, I'll definitely post it on our website and get it out to council as well as soon as we have it.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. And on page seven, just had a question under Town Assets, Callens Fields. You had mentioned the food trucks there and you were using a process similar to what was used by CCP. Tell us a little bit more.
Sure. So I met with the Director of Calver County Public Works, I'm sorry, Parks and Recreation. And they implemented a facility process where food trucks can actually come and sell food to at their activity. So their sports activities instead of having concession stands because they had such issues with holding those concession stands open, having them open regularly. And it has worked well. So I borrowed their permitting process and have allowed with the proper licensing and insurance requirements being met, local food trucks to be able to provide food at Callens Field during games. And in doing that, we've waived permit fees and they are donating that money to the team directly. And it's worked well.
Sounds like a really creative solution. So thank you for that. And which, how many trucks do we have?
We had, we've had about six total in the last two game events. So it's barely new.
And that's six who come at once at the game or is it they alternate? Oh, wow. Very good. Thank you. And then I also wanted to just welcome Greg Uncle also. So thank you for that. So it's great to have a new trainee on board for the family. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Before I go to, to Greg, you know, Keith, it's interesting from the food truck perspective because with the different games that come on, it's just different hungry crowds coming in every, every ninety minutes or so. So that's, I'll bet they love it. Yeah, yeah. Sure.
Yeah, I enjoyed some barbecue at one of those games recently. It was a lot different than having a hot dog. Yeah. Yeah, I have several observations, if you will. I don't know how many of them are actually questions, Holly. Appreciate the report. Let's see, the safe routes to school, you know, we all think about this. So far, we're around about seven years into this. Has the state paid for anything towards our efforts? So they have paid something.
Yes.
That's good.
Little over a hundred thousand dollars so far.
It's notable. Okay. The, I see RFP, what's the timeline here for having qualified design bids? That's what we're doing right now, right?
I would hope within the next three to six months.
That long? Why would that take so long?
Because we do not have an approved RFP yet from the state.
Waiting on that.
We haven't released it yet. So I would say as soon as we release it, it's a minimum sixty days. I would say three to six months if it goes quickly and we get the RFP back within the next month.
So come the next election, we know the election's coming up. We'll hear from November, next month, the council will be leaving the next group of elected officials with possibly a design for the, for that sidewalk, for them to pick that up from there and.
Possibly, yes.
I had a question and it's kind of an overarching question. You know, we've got a lot of things going on. There's a lot of projects. We had met a couple of times about ARPA funds and we had kind of voted on prioritizing some of that stuff. And there's a lot of important stuff that needs funding for sure, besides the attention to water park. Are we budgeting and forecasting budgeting, not just design of two sixty-one sidewalk, the Jaworski Parkway, for example? The design and the, and the construction costs of that into the future, several years? Because what I'm thinking of is just where these points are going to meet. And for water park stuff, changes there and all these other moving parts we have, just so we can kind of see where we're heading with, you know, all of those costs. Do we be doing that?
The question, do we have budgeted?
Forecasted, design and construction costs for all of these projects, really, you know, the safe routes to school one, the two sixty-one. There's some other things too. Callum's is probably another good example. And place holding that stuff in the future and kind of seeing where this stuff is going to fall. See ahead, you know, maneuver.
We have budgeted for the hundred percent design and construction drawings for the safe routes to school. So that's, that is budgeted currently in our capital improvement line.
That could be easily a million dollars to construct.
So just the design is the only thing that's budgeted, not construction?
So if construction is, say, construction where we would be ready for construction thirteen months from now or so. It just seems like it would be prudent on us to earmark some stuff, even though we don't know exactly how much this stuff's going to cost. That's a nice chunk and, you know, just to help guide us with how we're funding different things. Because, you know, I don't want to be so quick to dismiss, you know, our concerns and the discussions that we had with, you know, I don't want to say appropriating because we have the money already, but, you know, the ARPA funds and moving the stuff around. Everybody likes the idea of not having a bond for the water park. But if, if all of that money is getting swallowed up by, by, you know, the improvements there, whether repurposing, where does that leave everything else? That's, that's all.
So it looks like what you're asking for is a short and long range capital improvement.
Long range for sure. Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe three years.
Right, we, we do have a, a capital improvement plan and we can, we can bring that forward again and discuss that. And that, that is discussed as well each budget season also. So we, we do have projects in the pipeline and, and we can, if you're interested in looking at that now, so you can kind of get an idea where.
For the end of the year, just, you know, because we can kind of think about it, you know, moving into the, the next budget season. I appreciate it. Thanks. Let's see. Let's see. The. This crosswalk at two sixty-one near the firehouse, is that, I see that it's noted as installed and I should know if it's been newly installed. Is that newly installed, the crosswalk? Has it been there for a while? I had a couple of people ask me about it. Said, I think you haven't been able, can't cross the road there safely, but there is a new crosswalk there that.
The crosswalk has been there for a while.
Okay, maybe that's what. Okay, so it's been there. Has it been, has it been redone, repainted yet or?
Restripped in the continental style. I do not, that one is entirely finished yet, correct?
Okay. Is that something that within the next three months or so might get done? Somebody was asking me about it, that's all. Thank you. The ball fields. I know that we're working through the storm drain thing and we're moving ahead there. What about any of the other changes there at the Callums? I know one of the easy things there was removing the second ball field that was there. I think that was something that's part of whatever the plan is going to be there, the final plan. That's part of that. That's something that getting late in the season, well, not late in the season, late in the season of playing grass probably. But what's the plan, the timeline for, for that?
So the RFP will be going out very soon for the scope of work with the storm drain. And we obviously didn't want to start work on that until the season was over for football. So as soon as the season's over for football, the RFP will go out. It'll be before Town Council to approve and start work on that timeframe for that. Wayne, would you estimate time for work on the storm drain and?
I think it'll be a spring start when the weather clears. We're, we're very close to all our approvals.
A good yes, yeah, that's what I was thinking too. Okay. Does that cross the, the small ball field area where that drain is going? Okay, then all that makes sense. Okay, I was just looking for some progress, you know, over in that area of town, that's all. And. The note about the, the food trucks at the, the ball games, that was nice. I had attended one of the Beach Bucks games a week or two back, had a great time, weather was good. It's nice to see so many local families out enjoying the time. I mean, it really is, you know, that time of year is great economic development stuff. Because people coming from out of town and they're playing games and there's a lot of people. There's a lot of activity in town when those games are going on. Are we moving away from the brick and mortar concession there, you think? And is that pretty much what the county's doing?
The county has, yes. I wouldn't say we're moving away from it. They do still have access to sell some packaged food items in the concession stand. I think it's just been, it's a very large volunteer effort as well. So I think it's been a little bit of, oh, food trucks to come there and then still provide a donation to the team. Easy for them to record and not have to track inventory. So it's easy.
Well, I've been to many of the games over the years. I appreciated having the food trucks there. I mean, that was a nice, nice thing. Family fun night. Be there. And oh, last but not least, code enforcement activity. I see there's some, do we have a new code enforcement officer?
William Varner.
Billy Varner. Billy. That's it. Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. I think several of these things have been discussed already, but I'll go over them quickly. On the safe routes to the school, is there any definitive schedule for moving that forward? Any dates set?
Do not have a definitive schedule now.
On the Public Works Water Tower Maintenance Contract, resulting release of RFP, and I know I've asked this before, Jay. And are we going to include the painting that we discussed several years ago?
That is included also cleaning the Chesapeake Village Tower, looking at different scopes, different vendors and kind of learn some new information. I want to relook at all that and put something together and bring it before council.
Good. Thank you.
Sure.
Safe walkway at two sixty-one, the Jaworski Memorial Walkway, that's going to be posted soon?
Yes, I do have that file and I, I meant to post it already and I have not. So I'll, I'll send it to you directly and post it on the website.
And it does Jaworski Memorial Walkway?
Yes.
Okay, good. Energy audit, you already answered, we don't have that yet. And under the water reclamation treatment plant, the item on reducing the energy costs, I know I bring this up all the time, but once again, solar panels. I just urge us, we have a number of large buildings and tanks and things that we could put solar panels over. And then that follows up the later discussion about cutting our energy costs for the lighting. So my urge is to look at doing something on solar panels there. Welcome to Greg Uncle. Congratulations again, once another month in a long running record of no SSO spills or filter bypasses. Then on the water park, I know we've had lots of discussions about that and we talked about trying to move forward very, I'll say aggressively on that with the design build contract. But I hope at some point we can have a serious discussion about the timeline for that. Because from my experience, while a design build contract actually will move the project forward quicker than the old traditional design, construction contracts, we still have to do the initial work on selecting the design, build contractor, them doing the design. It, it's going to take a while. And I know we're talking about abandoning the twenty-four season. I understand that. I just question whether we're going to be ready for the twenty-five season. I think it's something to look at in the future. Thank you. And. Yes, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So most of my questions have already been answered. One or two came up that are a little bit new. I did not notice whether the striping, the new striping was done. Peggy and I just walked it, so we'll look on the way home and then we'll send a text. I did notice when we walked over today that they did correct the striping on the Memorial Parkway. So that's good, right? And that's final now, I assume.
It is, yes.
It also looks like they put a new guard rail up. Did I, did I see that also? I was kind of, I was curious about that. Regarding Callum's, the food truck's fantastic idea. I support that a hundred percent. Here again, I'd kind of like if, if those food trucks can be local or if we can have local businesses. I, I know we do this. This is not a criticism, just an observation, maybe even a call out to our local businesses who want to be engaged. If there's a way they can be part of that through their own food trucks, their own portable mechanisms, that would be fantastic as well.
I will add, we had Taste of Tides, which is local here to part of Abner's.
Yep. Cool. For the Callum's Field for the drain pipe, did I hear that you're going to send the RFP out after football season?
Yeah, well, it, it will, it will go up before football season is over likely, but it, work will not occur until after they're finished.
Right, so we know that. That's, that's a given. But it seems to me, and then you guys know the business better than I do, we ought to get that RFP out ASAP with, with a start date that's not before the end of football season. I think that's it for me. I, I am curious whether we've, you know, chosen the Jaworski Memorial. Maybe that's a conversation for another day. All right, thank you. That's done, that's settled. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll go back to the minutes. Thank you.
Adam, if you can, if you can bear us.
I'll follow up on what Councilwoman Hartman mentioned about the Sustainable, Sustainable Maryland certification. There's a nice list of bullet points. And if you look at those seven bullet points, what it points out in my mind is a number of volunteers that are actively involved in our community. And I, I just want to applaud them and thank them because without our volunteers, we would not have gotten that certification, in my opinion. And so that's to be applauded. And so, thank you. I kind of want to go back to a topic that was raised on the leak at the wastewater treatment plant. And whether it go to you or Josh or Brittany. But maybe we can delve into that because I think this is important. I really do. So I'm looking at page four and I read one gallon per minute. So I did some calculations real quick. And so that's one thousand four hundred and forty gallons per day, which if in a ninety day. which if in a 90 day cycle, which is our quarterly report, there'd be 1,200, 129,000 gallons. So I don't think this is something we should just gloss over. I think this is really problematic, you know, with all effort. And then if this has been going on quarter after quarter after quarter, I guess, I think we need to discuss this, um, because in the long run, um, is this water that is coming, like being charged through EDUs? Like, is it coming from the aquifer? Or where is this water generating from?
It's generated from the town.
So the aquifer. And that means that how many EDUs does the wastewater treatment plant get charged for?
106.
And so is this leakage, is it, is it, I really do have questions. I mean, as this, as this leakage goes through the system, um, I'm assuming that, that, that variable rate of the water, the 129,600 gallons is being charged to the water park as a fee? Is that a fair assumption?
The effective plan.
I mean, to the wastewater, excuse me.
Yes.
Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay. So we need, uh, you have my full support. Whatever we need to do to solve this problem, because what's going on is then those costs are being, if I understand the process right, distributed not only to, through fees, you know, through whatever our charges are, to our users of the wastewater treatment plant. It, it would be reflected like in our partners' budgets also. And so this is not something that, you know, I just want to gloss over. I want to recognize the severity of this problem. How long do we think this problem has been going on?
We are unsure, but, uh, as Josh has stated, he's working diligently to, to figure out. We've had Maryland World Water on site. Um, Public Works has been on site. Actually, even Donnie from North Beach Public Works is going to come on site on Friday. We've spoken with Calvert County Government. They've offered some resources as well. So, uh, we've, we've engaged our partners. They're aware. Um, we're doing everything we can to isolate this issue and recognize the severity of it.
Okay. Um, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm just, I, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't, as I was reading it and doing my figures, I wasn't being dramatic, you know, about what the potential costs are, nor did I want to gloss over it. And so, um, one of the selling points, like over a decade ago, even before I got on town council 20 years ago, because the E and R project was, the early phases were in process, was that we would always be charged more for electric. It was going to use more for electric and a lot less water. I, I remember that argument being made over and over and over again. And so the only thing I'll say is that it's disappointing that we didn't realize this trend sooner. I'm glad we noticed it now. And I wonder how this could affect our users' utility rates, the, the price they pay, because it's all kind of goes together. You know, one of the things that we, we said was during the last budgeting talks was that the fixed fee had to go up by a hundred percent from 50 to 100, if I remember correctly. And so I'm just, I'm wondering how all this kind of like ties in together, the effect of this amount of water being lost, because 129,000 gallons would make it one of the largest users in town, just the loss alone, if I'm not mistaken.
I think our, our water usage at the plant in general has not seen, you know, time over time, has not seen a significant increase. It's stayed pretty consistent. Um, so in terms of, if you're stating this specific issue is going to increase our rate users' cost individually, um, I wouldn't say that's the case, um, and that we're going to isolate the leak and we're going to fix the leak with whatever is necessary to do that, to mitigate this.
Okay. Yeah, whatever, whatever we need to do to solve this problem, um, because it makes it, just the leak alone, it makes it one of the largest water consumers in our town, I believe. Just so the, the leak alone. And that's a problem. Okay, can I, I'm going to continue. Um, because I had more. That one was just shocking. Um, oh, I hope, I hope the residents have noticed that the pocket parks are going up and I look forward to the landscaping around them when that should happen. And if you need any advice, I'm sure some green team members would love to give advice on what ought to be planted in those areas. Um, I did have a, actually a question this time on the code enforcement. Um, I have it on page 12. I'm using the old town administrator's report that I picked up on Friday or Saturday. Um, so page 12, it says constructing an improvement within town right of ways. Can you remind me of what those two incidents are?
Provide the address, please.
Absolutely. It's, uh, 3919 East Chesapeake Beach Road and 8220 Bayside Road. 14 and 15, if that helps.
Yes. That is, um, using a town alley that's not opened as a private driveway. Um, so constructing, uh, a private drive in an unopened town alley is what that's referring to.
So like paving it or something like that?
Uh, stone.
Stone? Okay. I, I didn't know if it was actually like, I understand that's a problem, but I didn't know if the actual building or an outbuilding was being, like a shed or something was being put on town property, that'd be even more problematic.
Right. So the issue with this one particular location is that it is right here on Route 260 and 261. And so it's not an area that we want. Um, we have not wanted that alley to be opened. And so because it's being used as a private drive, it's very deteriorated erosion. It's got significant, um, washout as well. So it's become quite a hazard. Uh, so that, that's why it's written as a code enforcement violation.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Treasury Report, we've read the Treasury's, uh, report. I'll stay right with Dr. Bodine.
I'll follow up on what Greg was, I think, asking, because I remember, um, years ago, we used to have, and it was quite beneficial. We would have a list of capital projects and it would, um, be like about 10 to 15 years out. When I first started on town council 20 years ago, the Fishing Creek Bridge was like nine years out for planning on the initial capital improvement project plan that I had with the spreadsheet. And so I think that might be where Greg's going, although I have no desire to speak for him, is that idea of showing the costs, uh, a potential cost. And I think in the first spreadsheet I got, the Fishing Creek Bridge estimate was $1 million and that was 20 years ago. So, um, it's just a way of looking at things and really planning it out. Um, the same way that you provide our ARPA fund, um, chart, that sort of stuff is just terrific. And, uh, I think that would be a, a nice approach. And it was really just a comment. That's all I have.
I have no additional, uh, questions or comments, but I, I will echo that. Um, I, I don't know what kind of work that is, but we are looking at a handful of interesting projects and, um, we'll, we'll be kind of interesting to see that as budget season approaches, if that's. Thanks.
No real questions, but good luck on closing out fiscal year. Well, I guess I'll say we'll look forward to what you're going to present in November. I hope we look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, my concerns were asked. Thanks.
Sir? No additional questions. Thank you.
Adam?
No additional questions. Thank you for the report.
Okay. Um, Town Engineers Report, if we have any questions, I'll stay right with Councilwoman Hartman.
Um, I just have one comment. It's not a question. I, I'd like to say that, you know, on the Fishing Creek dredging, I like that you included the, the no change remark because when you just put the comments in there without a change, I always have to think, did it change? Did it not change? So thank you for saying it hasn't changed. This is what it is. This is where we are. And I don't have to remember what I did last month. Thank you.
And no questions. Thank you.
Um, on the dredging, um, I guess at some point they'll resume that, that, when, when they do, there's no costs that we need to be accounting for there, are there?
Right. The only thing that the town is responsible for, but we have received funds from the state of Maryland, would be to, um, clean out the dredge material placement site. So we typically, uh, seek a grant for the total costs to do that and it's a reimbursement model. So we would have to budget for the costs initially to remove the material and then be hopefully reimbursed by the state.
All right. Well, that's, would be a good thing to budget because, you know, we're not reimbursed till we're reimbursed, right? And then project, I guess, when we're going to clear that out and just, you know, line these things up. Um, this might be more of a question, Public Works, but, um, Richfield Station, there doesn't appear to have been any movement with the developer there. They're just seem to be happy where they're at, whatever, for whatever reason that is. Um, and we've had concerns with the base asphalt. It's been sitting there for 10 years, 11 years uncapped. And at some point, who knows when, if, it could even, could be an operative word. Um, we can't make them put that topping asphalt down in there, right?
I think it depends on the location. Um, do you want to refer to exactly where you're talking about?
Well, you know, as you, really, I don't think there's any topping asphalt coming into that area, coming off of Sandsbury. There are houses, well, and those are all condominiums down there right now, even though they're the townhome style. Um, and really that entire, the way Richfield Station is set up is that entire enclave down there of condominiums responsible for those roads. It's not a, a standard item that I would be paying for as a, you know, homeowner in there. Um, and I'm just, we've been concerned with exposure to that base asphalt and the timeline of when, whatever the developer's plans are and when the topping asphalt goes on there, we could be hanging in them a bag of worms, you know, with, if the base asphalt's degrading. I mean, that's been there exposed for a long time. And we know the base asphalt's more porous, Jay. Um, I was just wondering if we, I don't know if we have any recourse there or there's any leverage that we have to make the developer, did we do some core samples now because of the age of it and test it? Because at some point, if.
So in our, not to interrupt you, but in our new PWA moving forward, all these things are captured. It's not just that. There's other issues, curb, sidewalk.
Sure.
Um, so to move forward, there's basically a punch list that we have to address that and some other issues before we let the rest of the project go on.
But to clarify, those items are public assets, not on private. Clarify. So anything that's privately owned within the HOA is not on that list.
Well, I'm just thinking of the asphalt itself, which I don't think that's been turned, none of that's been turned over yet because it's not done. Um, and this is something for us to think about because, you know, once it is done and turned over to the HOA, they really, HOA really doesn't have much recourse there. It'd all be after the fact. So we're really dependent on the town stewardship, if you will, of the stuff that developers got in place there, the age of it and what his long-term plans are and the condition that stuff's going to be in when it turns over to the HOA. So.
The town is, I will clarify, the town is not involved in anything that's turned over to the HOA. This is, we are only involved in, uh, public assets that are public, not private.
Okay. So then Holly's saying, you're saying that the town is not involved with overseeing that asphalt, the base asphalt that's been sitting there for a decade. Right?
We do not have on our punch list any item that would be turned over privately.
And that would be sidewalks too, because HOA, I think, ends up with all of that stuff, don't they?
The only part of that that would be a town asset is the actual part of it that is the rail trail, uh, which goes through the HOA. The town has a right of way easement for that and the maintenance. So that is on it. Um, and all town utilities, water and sewer and storm drain if it's town.
Um, okay. Um, what should I tell the HOA there then? I mean, what's the best way for, I mean, should they just retain an engineer and are they kind of, kind of on their own, you know, with, with that stuff and?
Yes, the HOA should not accept anything from the developer until they have all items resolved. So if they've accepted anything and allowed the developer to walk away, then it would be on the HOA to, to handle that.
All right. I'll talk to Bill about it. Thank you. Uh, duh, 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 duh. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir? A quick ones, um, on the Fishing Creek dredging, uh, you have a meeting scheduled with the Corps. What's, when is the meeting?
Did my note say that? Do we have one? I don't think we did.
It says meeting scheduled with the Army Corps.
I think that might've been an, an old note. Uh, we've had our meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers. They've updated on the project. Uh, we will follow up with them and to see if they have the funding. The last we heard, they were making a request for the next fiscal year for the funding. We have not heard that that's been allocated, um, but we will continue to follow up with them.
Thank you. And on the, uh, water reclamation plant headworks, what's the schedule for that project?
They are due to send us the initial, uh, feasibility work this month. Uh, we talked to them last week. They hope to get it to us this week. They're a little bit behind. Um, I'll talk to them again tomorrow and see where it is if I don't, if I don't receive it tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. So I have.
Vice President? Yeah, the only comment that I had was on the, on the pocket parts. I noticed that. I kind of walked around. I mean, it's gay for sure, but, um, is there anything that, that you, you say action supporting the construction? Or is there any action or are you just keeping your eye on it? Or are you available to them should they, should they need help?
I'm available to Jay and the town as they need help.
Got it. Okay. Thanks. Adam?
Yes. Just one question.
Just one question, um, on the water park. It says aquatic design and I was wondering
in engineering terms, is water park design, I mean, uh, aquatic design, does that include water park design also underneath as a subset?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Um, Wind Beach Deputies Report, if we have any questions, um, I'll stay with Dr. Bodine. So, good evening, sir. Thank you for being here.
And hi. Thank you for your service. Um, and if you cannot say anything, I understand. Um, and on 27, there was a sexual assault. Um, and it says detective investigating allegations. Do you have any update on that? And if you can't share it, I do understand. Okay. All right. Um, anytime you see sexual assault in town, it, you know, raises a concern is what I'll say. And that's all I had. Thank you.
I have no additional questions. Thank you for your service. And I did notice, um, uh, anecdotally, uh, a lot of activity, uh, uh, over the last two or three night evenings, I've been driving from one point to another, Sheriff. So this is more countywide, but, um, there was a car, there's a bad wreck on, on, uh, Route 2 just before Route 4. And there were a ton of sheriffs on call. Do I have that right? I know this isn't relative, relevant Chesapeake Beach, but just a lot of activity. So, uh, I'll thank you for your service.
I have no questions. Thank you for service. Stay safe.
Indeed. Stay safe, sir.
Um, yeah, I had something and you can certainly answer by under investigation, no comment. Um, that rash, the graffiti that had occurred in Chesapeake Village a little while back now, I don't know if I'd ever seen it, any conclusion to that at all. Is that something that you could speak to?
It's still being.
Hey, thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you for your service and for letting me in the door.
Bye, sir.
For what's his service that you did?
I have no questions. Thank you. Stay safe.
Thank you, sir. Uh, North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, um, unless Larry has something to add, as always, I'll say if you have, if you have anything to add.
Uh, just one thing to add, uh, just for everyone's notice, uh, the trunk or treat, our annual trunk or treat is going to be Sunday, October 29th from 1:00 to 3:00 at the firehouse. Come dressed in your best costume for our spooktacular event. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor's Report. Last Thursday, we had the honor of hosting our town recognition, our town volunteer recognition dinner. Uh, it was truly humbling to be with a few dozen residents who selflessly donate their free time to the town they love with no expectation of, of recognition. And then on Friday, I attended the Beach Buccaneers pep rally and had the honor to present a town grant of $5,000 to cover the cost of the team's end of season trophies for our local youth. More importantly, it was an opportunity for the town to recognize the entire Buccaneers family for their volunteerism, dedication to our youth and our continued part, and, and their continued partnership with the town of Chesapeake Beach. Specifically at the pep rally, I recognized all the parents, coaches, volunteers, and board of directors. These partnerships are vital to the sense of community that we all value and appreciate. We have a good team over there. We have a good team over here. Touchdown. While those who volunteer their time do not who volunteer their time do not like to toot their own horns, I'm going to do some horn tooting for the generous residents and, and Town Council of Chesapeake Beach. Over the years, and this goes back to the two mayors and councils before this one, the town has generously provided grants to, to local organizations that quietly support our community. Some of these are Calvert Family Advocates, Calvert Hospice, Friends of Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum, our two local food pantries, Beach Elementary, Beach Buccaneers Youth Club, Calvert Health, Twin Beach Library, and Twin Beach Players. The BayNet online news service and the town recently recognized local photographer and community volunteer Bessie Hoskins for sharing the beauty of Twin Beaches, of our Twin Beaches on social media, including Facebook. Her message to the town is, when you have a deep affection for your hometown, there are no boundaries to what you can achieve. Thank you, Bessie. That's all I have. Resolutions and ordinances. Vote on ordinance 0-23-22, an ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland regarding the use of cannabis smoking or ingesting on town property and in any business establishment in town. Is there a motion to approve? Your second? Okay, we've discussed this already. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Next, introduce and vote on resolution R-23-3, a resolution of the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland regarding purchase of property at 3915 26th Street, Chesapeake Beach.
Go approve.
Can I discuss your...
Certainly in support of this, we have been discussing this. It was one of the, on the side here, I can't recall, the 365, was that the, the last number we reviewed? Or I know that we were doing a quick claim, then we weren't able to get them down at all?
That's the number we agree with. We really can't discuss anything about negotiations at this time. But that, yes, that's the number that we agreed to.
All right. I knew, I knew that land acquisition thing was, was one of the things that we had earmarked originally, early on with, for the use of ARPA funds. Where is this money coming from?
So the Town Council will ultimately get to decide that this is the, to purchase the property. And then we will need to come back to Town Council for the full allocation of the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Playing its owner, we did receive a report from the Chairwoman, Board of Appeals. There will be a continuation hearing on case number 2023-03, Rottweiler Incorporated Donovan Estates LLC, and it's scheduled for October 30 at 7:00 p.m. Seabox, we did receive a report from, from Susan, Climate Change Advisory Group. Thank you. The Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee chaired by Mr. Jeff Foltz is moving forward with finalizing our town's coastal resiliency plan. Plan has been referred to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for review and comment at their meeting scheduled for Wednesday, October 25 at 7:00 p.m. Meeting is open to the public, so please show up and share your thoughts and comments. The steering committee will meet the next day, Thursday, October 26, to consider comments received from planning and zoning. This meeting is also open, so please show up. And once the steering committee finalizes the resilience, coastal resilience plan, it will be forwarded to the council for review and comment. Co-chair Keith, any comments?
Yeah, I have one. I just wanted to follow up on your comment about solar panels and just also encourage the town whenever they have the opportunity to look further into that. I know when we established this committee, we had, that was one of our recommendations early on. And I, and I get the impression that there might be still a disconnect in the thinking on that. Because I know on that early one, it was looked into and there, there was look, I should say, I think the proposal that was put forward was how much solar panels would we need to kind of power the entire town? And it was like a five acre field. And we're like, no, 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 that's not what we're really interested in. We understand that it would take a lot of solar panels to power the entire town. I think, at least from my perspective, I feel we're looking at what opportunistic opportunities do we have to reduce the amount of electricity that we use? And that may be just a few panels here and a few panels there and a few panels there, not how are we going to power the entire water reclamation treatment plant? But I just wanted to add some clarity to that because I just felt like there was a little bit of uncertainty there or different ways of thinking. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you on that. And I'll just build on that and just say that I think continuing to try to incorporate solar panels across the town is key to our continued chartering as a sustainable community. So, thank you.
EDCs.
Calvert County Economic Development Committee has not met since the last meeting on September 18, which was reported on at town's September 21 meeting. The County Economic Development Advisory Commission did not meet in September, October. I have to say that the commission, which we call EDACT, is sad to report the passing of our commission co-chair, Tony DiStefano. Tony was a hardworking member of EDACT and will be seriously missed. Mayor and I attended the Maryland Municipal League Conference earlier this week. One of the many economic development related topics discussed at the conference was the legislative priorities workshop. On the M and L list for the next legislative session in Annapolis will be to authorize local tourism zones. If approved, these zones will help support the economic development of local communities through tourism expansion. On another note relating to economic development for our residents and local businesses, Council Member Morris and I attended a meeting last night of the Naval Research Lab Resident Advisor Board. This group is involved in the ongoing project to address the discharge of chemicals called PFAS, the forever chemicals. Council Member Greg, any comments?
Yeah, thanks, Larry. Me and Larry have been serving, have been attending these meetings. We're RAB members, have been, this is our sixth or seventh meeting, I think. They do these semi-annually. The next one is in April of next year. This is where the Navy reports on their progress with the PFAS issues they have on base down there. And their update, basically, they're continuing to collect data on PFAS chemicals that are leaving the base. They're not necessarily looking outside of the base footprint. But of note, they are making progress. There's some progress there. They've got, there are two streams that leave the base there. There's, I call it a north stream and a south stream. And there are two new state of the art PFAS scrubbing facilities, if you will, that are planned to be built there, that are supposed to clean water, egg, on the north stream and the south stream, this stuff leaving the, the base there. They're the first of their kind in the state. They're, they're scheduled for construction in April of next year. And, you know, we'll see where that goes. So pretty much where we're at. Next, in the next meeting of that is April 17, 2024.
Thank you. Couple last things, just for note, the Maryland Economic Development Authority Economic Development Week is scheduled for October 23 to 27. The Calvert Festival at North Beach occurs this Saturday, October 21, from noon to 5:00 p.m. Hopefully the weather cooperates. And the town is working on our annual Light Up the Town ceremony scheduled for Sunday, November 26, and the Holiday Lights Tour on Saturday, December 9. In addition to North Beach, Pat Carpenter Holiday Parade is scheduled for Friday evening, December 1. That's a little bit different than in the past. They're going to do it on a Friday evening.
If I could interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
It's no longer the Pat Carpenter parade. Yes, it's, it's...
Showing my age.
It's not a privately run affair anymore. It's run by the town of North Beach. So it would be the North Beach Christmas parade.
Thank you. That's it. Yes.
With respect to the PFAS scrubbers, the PFAS scrubbers from the naval base that you had just mentioned, would that be, did you get a sense whether that would be something we would be able to use in town? I mean, there's going to be some time out there because they have to build them and check them and see if they work. But did you get any sense that that would be something we could incorporate with the water treatment plant for water going through where we take some stuff out, but never PFAS?
It's my understanding that we've done sampling and we did not detect any PFAS in our discharge stream. Is that correct, Josh? There was. At, obviously...
Possibly.
Possibly. Green Team.
Thank you. Yeah, there was good and bad. So the bad was, due to weather, we had to cancel the pathway and paddle pickup where we go along the creek and gather litter. The good is that this past Sunday morning, there was a group that planted both trees and shrubs at 17th Street and B and at Dark Star Lane, which is in Chesapeake Village at the water tower. And so I'd like to specifically thank Scout Troop 429, Billy with Public Works, our landscaper who dug the holes, and our master gardener. And of course, all the volunteers that came out, especially those with the green team. These trees were purchased by a program called Tree Mendus, Maryland, with the Maryland Forest Service. And if you want to see how the event went, photos are on the website. And I'd just like to really thank and shout out all those that participated. It's really nice to see new trees, new shrubs being planted where possible on town property. I look forward to encouraging more. So, thank you. That's the green team report. And oh, one other thing, we're to have a meeting next week. There's been some conflicts with people that will be missing that meeting. And so we'll communicate with the town administrator in the next 24 hours to set up that meeting time that works for as many volunteers that come as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Calum's Revitalization Committee.
We have no significant report, but I, I just want to talk about how great it is. Bucks are in full swing. I was away last week on a trip. I'll talk more about that in my lightning round. But as a result, I wasn't, I, I wanted to be at the pep rally and I wanted to eat at the food trucks. And I had to miss that. But it, it's just great to see the, it's great to see that team proceeding as, as scheduled. I'm thrilled about that.
Thank you, sir. Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a short report this month, because we did not have a meeting in October. But I did want to just bring folks' awareness that we have completed our brochure. I put one on everyone's table. We have some in the back and there's some out front there for anybody to pick up. I wanted to thank Randy George Miller for taking the lead on pulling this together and, and herding it through the past several months. And also Holly Wall for her artistic flair and making it look so nice. We just kind of gave her a white piece of paper with all the words on it, and now it looks beautiful. So we really appreciate that. And we're, we're handing these out. The Calvert County Health Department has already taken a big pack of them and is distributing them. So we'll continue to do that at all of our, our events. And our next meeting will be the second Thursday of November at 6:00 p.m. over at the Northeast Community Center. Do so.
Keith, you finally figured out what I've been doing for seven years. And Holly a scribbled piece of paper and make it look like something good. Okay, very good. Walkability Community Advisory Group, Councilwoman Hartman.
Well, to start with something that Councilman Fink referred to, I'm pleased to see that the permanent striping on 260 returned to mark the wider walking path to the east side between Seagate Horizons and a wider bike path at the west side. It's, it's, I'm really glad they moved them out. I was always afraid they just weren't. So I should have more faith. We've been considering names for the new pocket parks in the town administrators' report. After discussing with Mayor Mahoney, these will be included in November to be reviewed by Town Council. New paths, we are looking, we're planning new paths which exist in town but aren't paths because we didn't call them paths. So Councilman Fink and I have done different walks around to, to make a combination paths of the mini gardens and the pocket parks. And so right now, we're at about 5.2 miles of paths that we will work further with town staff to get them marked and published as a map online. On October 20, town staff and a few of the walkable community members will meet with an asphalt art vendor. We are looking at different places in town where we could maybe put asphalt art down to highlight walking paths on the streets. It's been a method, I think everybody, a lot of people might have seen the Baltimore efforts that were done. They're spectacular. But we will talk to one of the vendors to see, you know, what does it cost? How long does it last? What kind of process is this? And then maybe determine where we could do something in town to do the same thing. And on the plus side, there's lots of grants out there to do asphalt art, too. The next walkable community meeting will be on October 25 at 6:30 in Town Hall. Councilman Fink?
Just very quickly, it's a great report. The two, two quick, or additional facts. The walking trails that Peggy and I did, we kind of recorded them and working alongside the railway folks to, to, to get this kind of coordinated path. They, they did something neat. I can't remember the service that they used to highlight spots along the way. And we're going to dovetail with them. Do you want to add to that or?
Was that ArcGIS program?
Yeah, yeah. And that's really a neat way for people to go just walk up and scan a QR code and then they'll have their walking path. And then the second thing is just related with Calum's. Now that the drainpipe project is moving forward and we have a date certain for that, we will begin to reinvestigate our revitalization, wherein the anchor for the walking trails that we've been discussing will, will be at Calum's Field. And there'll be a marker there and a QR code to scan and kind of a spoke, hub and spoke model from, from there for some of these different walks. So it's been slow going, but Councilwoman Hartman, when she took over the Walkability Group, brought some new, new energy. So now we're seeing real progress on that. And the last thing I'll say is the asphalt art meeting, this is a great example where the state, their initial reaction was, whoa, I don't know, we don't do that, asphalt art? And now we've got them interested and, and we may be, so I, I don't want to overstate it, but we could be a, a prototype. So you don't always get that reaction with them. So well done. I'm excited about that. Early days, but I'm excited.
Thank you, sir. No one to finish business, new business. The Town Council to consider reappointment of Paul Doherty to the Board of Appeals.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? So any public comment? Hearing none, I'll move to the council lightning round and I'll begin with Dr. Bodine.
Just two things real quick. One is just a reminder of the Halloween Family Fun Night on October 28. And second, in hanging out with the scouts from Scout Troop 429 on Sunday morning, they expressed desire that if the town has projects that would be appropriate for scouts, these are middle school, high schoolers of, you know, that age group, they are interested in always serving the community. So whether it be Seabox or again with us with the green team or whatever other volunteer opportunities, there may be, they're interested. And there were probably, you saw the photos, maybe 15 scouts and parents and then the green team members. So it was quite a showing. And so it's just an opportunity that we're always looking for volunteers. And they were wonderful. So just a thought.
Yeah, just, I'll be brief. I was away on a trip and it was a wonderful trip, great vacation. I'll be happy to share with anyone. I won't bore you all now. But as a result of that, I missed two events I wanted to attend. One I already mentioned. The other one was a volunteer party. And I talked to the mayor when I got back and I, I missed a good, I missed a good party, which kills me. But my, probably more important than that is, you know, you look at the volunteers, you look at this list of volunteer committees, these folks are all working, you know, as volunteers. And I tip my hat to every one of them and the work they do for the town. And, you know, every, every person on this day has got their start as volunteers in one role or another. We're virtually volunteers for all intents and purposes. And I'm sorry I missed that party. And I thank everyone for their work and contributions to the town. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. One, it's posted on the town website, but just a reminder to everyone to submit your pictures. Reminder, Halloween Fun Night, you mentioned October 28 and then...
Happy Halloween. Yeah, happy Halloween. That's my favorite time of the year. His name was brought up earlier today, this evening, and I was, had some other notes.
earlier today, this evening, and I was, had some other notes prepared. It's appropriate for me to mention, again, the passing of Tony DiStefano. I know that many of us knew him. He's been a stalwart here in the county. And he's been on, when he served, his volunteerism here in the county is really, really stands tall. You know, kept Tony chaired the county economic development for a while there and, and spent a lot of time touring around the county. We've hosted him here, walking through the water park in the past and things. You know, his family business, Tax Depot, over there. I've known Tony for 22 years. They helped, this family helped us set up our side business and helped us keep on the rails with all of that. So I know all of them. The county is definitely less because he's gone. Amazing example of a human being. He leads by example. He's just led such a productive and influential life, in my opinion. And he really is an example for, for all of us there. And again, happy Halloween. I look forward to seeing who shows up at the Halloween night, October 28th, from 5:00 to 7:30.
Wonderful. Sir?
Thanks. Yeah, just a reminder, November 9th, the Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition meeting, Northeast Communities, Community Center at 6:00 PM. And wishing you all a happy Halloween.
Now I feel bad because my lightning round is sad. But we had, I get news snippets from a local news source that comes around from Calvert County and the area. And I just wanted to comment, and it's interestingly based on the mayor's comment about traffic accidents and Councilman Fink's comment about traffic, traffic accident on two and four. All of the sudden, it seems four times a week, I get a notice of our local area where somebody has died in a car accident. And they didn't used to be that plentiful. And it's multiples. It's two people, it's four people, it's kids in cars. And I just want to comment to people, get there safe. You don't have to get there faster. You're not necessarily getting the last of anything, getting there five minutes faster. But you can lose a lot. And if you can cause people to lose even more and live with that. So try to be kind. Try to be slow. Try to observe, you know, something like the speed limit. Be cautious out there. A lot of people depend on you when you're behind the wheel to act responsibly. So please do. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it?